Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you again for being here. This is our regular monthly meeting for July 7th, 2025. And board members, we have a couple of board members who said they would not be able to make it tonight. We do have a quorum, so we're good to go for any action the board needs to take. You have before you an proposed agenda. If you would like to take a look at that, and the floor will be open for a motion. Do we approve this agenda for tonight's meeting or make any changes? You see fit.
I can motion to approve.
Okay. Motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Great. Well, if everyone would please stand for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, Ms. Williams had sent an email, one from last week, that had the minutes from the June meeting. The floor will be open for a motion to approve those minutes or make any changes that you note that need to be made. Was that a motion, Ms.?
It was a motion to approve.
All right. I have a motion to approve the minutes from the June meeting.
Thank you.
And I have a second. All right. Any discussion on those? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. And then in today's email, you should have received the dispersments for the month. And if you haven't had a chance to take a look at those, please do so.
I can motion to approve.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Any questions about the disbursement? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Thank you. Uh, principals report. Ms. Fair is here with us tonight.
So I'll be reporting for all three schools. I'm gonna start with Ralph Askins. They just want to thank Ms. Heather Bradley and Ms. Lori Frame for a successful learning, uh, summer learning camp. The last day was June 26th, and they had a water day thanks to the Fayetteville Fire Department. So they came out and let them play in the water. Ralph Askins will be sending out their teacher assignment postcards again this summer. This is where the kids get a scratch off to reveal their teacher. And then their open house is gonna be scheduled for July 31st, and that will be from 3:30 until 5:30. So again, that's July 31st from 3:30 to 5:30. Fayetteville City Schools, so this is in conjunction with all three schools, will be having a back-to-school bash, and that will be also on July 31st. That's gonna be located behind the middle and high school. And we'll have food trucks, ice cream trucks, face painting. I believe a local band might be there. And we'll also have a clothing drive for all students and the parents to attend. And then we'll have Dr. Mayberry. He came and spoke to our students last year. He will be here to speak to students and parents, and that will be in the stadium there, our football stadium, and that will start at 6 o'clock. So just make sure with the open houses, we gave about a 30-minute buffer there with the elementary school and our middle school to where you can transition to the back of the campus there. For the middle school, they're also excited about the back-to-school bash, and they wanted to let everyone know that they'll have open house that afternoon from 3:30 until 5:30. And then after that, transition to the back of campus as well. They said now that they're fully staffed, they're finalizing their master schedule and want to encourage online registration for our returning students. For the high school, we had several students that attended Boys and Girls State last month. I've talked to several of them, and they had a great time. I think they learned a lot at both of those. We're almost finished with scheduling the students for the fall, so we got a little bit ahead this summer. Normally, it's, I think, as Mr. Jones knows for sure, it's right up until school starts. But hopefully, we'll be able to give ourselves a little buffer this year. This year, we have a few new programs. We're gonna partner with TCAP Pulaski, and that will be for our health science program and our criminal justice programs. And both of those groups of students will be able to obtain an industry credential that they will actually be able to go out and use once they leave the high school. So we're very excited to partner with them so we can give our students a great opportunity there. With our ag science students, we're partnering with MTSU. And so we have a few different classes within our ag program that students will be able to earn dual credit and be able to carry those credits on with them as well. So we're excited about those partnerships. I did want to remind our seniors that our senior pictures are set for July 30th. If they need any more information, we've sent out emails to their school email, and we've also have put out a Facebook post. If they need any more details, they can call the school for that. Lastly, I just want to say thanks to Ms. April and Ms. Frances, our custodians. They've actually been ahead of the game this year as well. They've worked really hard, and we've already had teachers come back into the building the past couple of weeks to go ahead and get their rooms ready. So we can feel the excitement growing for the next school year. So, yep. Thank you.
Any questions, please? I'm excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Appreciate you being here. Yes, sir. And then we have a time on the agenda each month for a public comment, and we did have a request this morning.
Yes, sir. As we spoke about in the executive committee, we have Jason Maloney from Century Construction Group who has submitted written requests to be here. He is also comes with Eric, also from Century, and we've had a conversation about the procedural parts of this, so they are aware. Call him up at this time.
My turn?
Yes, sir.
Well, thank you all for having us. We just wanted to kind of show you a little bit about Century and who we are, let you put a face with a name. As you all know, we are one of the contenders on your dome project. We are so very excited about this project. I know that you've been waiting a long time, spent a long time coming. We actually were the only bidder back in 2022 on this exact same project. And so we have been tracking it for a long time. We have really had it slotted for, and even over the past year, we've had multiple dates and when we think we were gonna bid. And you can ask your Leo and Greg with Broadus, we've really been tracking this project. And so we're excited to be here and have the opportunity. Give you a little bit of background about us. My dad started the company in 97, so we have been blessed with some growth across the Southeast. We're able to even, you know, just recently, open offices in Austin, Texas, Nashville. We've had an office in South Mississippi for 15 years now. Headquarters is in Tupelo. So we've done a lot of work here in Southern Tennessee. We've done a lot of work in Huntsville, Huntsville area, very familiar with the area. Done a lot of these FEMA-rated dome projects across the Southeast with your owners, with Broadus. And so we've got a great team, and with them is also your architect, JBHM. They're located in Tupelo as well. So we have a very great relationship with them. You've got a beautiful building design, and we really want the opportunity to be able to give you that. And so, again, I'm Jason. I'm president of the company, and we are just excited for the opportunity. And I'd be happy to answer any questions now or later, and looking forward to seeing how the results come out.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Does anyone have a question? All right. Appreciate it. Okay. Supervisors reports.
So wanted to share with you our big thing that we've got on our agenda right now, of course, is professional development. We're very excited about some of the professional development activities we're doing. Of course, we're gonna be doing PD the 29th, 30th, 31st, and then the 4th. Biggest thing you need to be aware of is when you come to breakfast, come to The Rock. So we always want to invite you guys. We're very excited. The Baptist Church kind of made some decisions about their facility where they're not opening it up to public use anymore. They're just kind of utilizing it for their own worship services. So The Rock has been gracious enough. It's a fantastic facility, huge parking lot, very, 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 you know, excited about the technology equipment things we're gonna use. So we will be having the breakfast there on the 29th. It's in Park City on the left, yes.
The 29th.
So the 29th is our first PD day. We will be starting breakfast 7:30 in the morning, and it's gonna be catered by Marvin's. Thank you, Lisa. We will not be having banana pudding for breakfast, just a point. We would like to, but we're not. We're gonna wait on that. So to kind of give you a breakdown, we are gonna have new teacher training on the 23rd and 24th. We decided we're gonna spend two days with our new teachers. We're gonna have substitute training as well. We make sure that we want all of our groups to be well-trained, well-prepared. Very excited about our speakers. On the 29th, I know you're familiar with Ron Clark. He's gonna be one of our speakers, as well as we made the decision that we wanted to, like, empower our teachers and our personnel. We're also doing Ted Schott's coming from the State Department to talk about retirement and 401Ks because of some of the changes and things going on, and we want, you know, sometimes you think that's an older experienced person topic, but in reality, you need to be thinking about it when you're a newcomer. So he's gonna be here. We're gonna do content areas on the 30th. Very excited about that speaker. J.D. Hughes is gonna be coming to present. We saw him at the Coordinated School Health Meeting in Nashville. I want to use this opportunity to brag on Claudia. We are able to fund and pay for these great presenters through the Stronger Connections Grant. So Ron Clark's a very in-demand speaker. J.D. Hughes is well thought of as well in bringing him in. And on the 31st, very excited, a speaker that Spencer really wanted that we'd had before, which is Brian Minler. And Brian Minler is also, especially since we had him before, a very well thought of presenter and speaker. So he'll be presenting to our entire group on the 31st. So those are kind of the things. Also, on that collaborative PE, we, because we were paying for it for a grant, invited some other school systems, and I got word today, I don't know if I told Mr. Jones, we've got 10 PE teachers from Giles County coming that are also gonna be a part of our PE training because a lot of times you don't have things for those instructors. We also invited Lincoln County to participate, and we've invited Moore County because, again, that's kind of a large group presentation. But those are the things that we've got on tap. And again, we're very excited about this grant because normally, we wouldn't be able to afford this caliber of speaker. So would invite you, if you'd like to come in and sit in, it's gonna be really good stuff.
What are, okay, are those all on the 29th?
No. The 29th is gonna be Ron Clark and Ted Schott. And then J.D. Hughes is, and I'm very excited about his topic. This is why when I saw him, I knew we had to get him. Academic integration in PE class, as well as collaboration and working as a team. So he is the best at what he does. He's on the 30th, and that'll be also, all of the science people will meet together, all of the ELA people, all of the math people, all of the CTE people, because that's been something that we did that the teachers requested over and over again. And then if you wanted to see Brian Minler, he will be on the morning of the 31st. And he is an excellent speaker as well.
So Ron Clark, is it gonna be the 29th at the church?
Yes. Ron begins at 8:30, so you can eat breakfast, and then we'll slide straight into Ron. So do you guys have any questions for me about this or anything else? Oh, also, Redstone, we're very excited. I want to brag on them. They approached us about doing the meal, of course, for the cookout, and they're gonna, yeah, they're gonna pay for that. They're gonna, yeah, they're coming, they're cooking, they're paying for it, so they're gonna do burgers and hot dogs, and then we're gonna integrate some things there and pick up some baked beans and other things, which works out great for us because then our people can be facilitating those content areas.
And what day is the cookout?
The cookout is, is it the 31st?
It's on the...
Thursday?
Thursday. I think it's...
Wednesday or Thursday?
I think it's Thursday, the 31st. I was, I pulled up my email. That's okay. I just pulled up my email before I came up here because, but we're gonna be sending this out to you guys as we're doing our whole detailed deal. Yep, 31st. But yeah, the 31st is that, and it will be at the middle school. So we definitely want you guys to come and help do that. And I think that is where we're gonna work in the banana pudding, by the way, because that's been a goal. Yeah, that was a goal when we were putting our notes together.
What school is Brian Minler gonna be at?
He is actually gonna be talking to the whole everybody, but he's gonna be at Fayetteville High School. So we're gonna be doing that one in the cafeteria. Now, here's what's awesome about it. He's not just doing an hour presentation, he's doing like a three-hour workshop. So there's gonna be a lot of up and moving around, and he's a very unique presenter, if you haven't heard him before. But yeah, we had a lot of positive feedback when we had him a few years ago, and that's why Spencer's gonna be introducing him. Spencer would tell you as a teacher, he changed how Spencer interacted with his students. And Spencer was the one that brought him up in open discussion, and it was amazing we were able to book him.
Yeah, this is one of the more dynamic years for PD that we've probably ever had. We're blessed to have great grants and great people to write the grants and manage them and orchestrate all this.
So yeah, but those guys, all of those presenters are well worth the investment, and I would put those individuals up against anybody that goes. But anything else you guys would like to know? Again, you'll be getting a more detailed list of all that as it's fleshed out in totality. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stiles.
And I just, it's just piggybacking on that. Ron Clark, you've gotta come. You've gotta see him. He's, one thing that he's going to address with our teachers and staff is just the buy-in of students and making sure that, you know, in the classroom, there's good classroom environment where it's basically school climate. I think if you've ever gone to his, I've never been fortunate enough to go to the academy, but he started the Ron Clark Academy. It was a nonprofit organization for, it was in Atlanta, Georgia, for the low socioeconomic area. And he, apparently, right when you walk in, there's this, what, three-story slide that he put in the main foyer area. I know Bridget's gone, so, but it's pretty cool how he's created a lot of innovative things for the school. So I'm eager to hear him. But I also wanted to mention summer camp. I know that Spencer bragged on that, and that was a big success. We had about 150 students, and with our title funds, we were able to offset the cost on the STEM, and we provided STEM classes for all students. So we had an engineering section for students as well as Mr. Hobbs and Ashia Hicks. They were the ones that put that on, and then they also dissected frogs and owl pellets and things like that. So that was a lot of fun. So it wasn't just, you know, it wasn't just hardcore academics. It was a lot of fun for the kids. And then pre-K, I wanted to mention that we've really, you know, put a call out to get kids involved in our pre-K program. So we've got about 60 students enrolled. We've got 20 slots left, so we usually have several trickle in around this time. So hopefully, we'll get it full, and we'll have our 80 students enrolled. So, thank you.
Do you see there changes in head start?
Yes.
Coming?
Yes.
Do you see that impacting?
Definitely. Yeah, we had a meeting the other day, and they're focusing on their three-year-old program, so we'll get a lot of their students as well. So, yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Williams?
So the year-to-date revenue and expenditure reports for the month of June or the year-to-date through June, was it mailed up here and how far in the year time do you have? Just, these are not the final numbers. Those will, final numbers probably be on this, on this, we still have. But getting close. Getting close.
Appreciate those monthly reports. Any questions on those? Committee reports, facilities and transportation.
Yes, sir. Last start, put an update on the deed property. We've been getting some assistance from an attorney, and they, right now, we have, I believe we hold that our name is on the deed. We are writing a check this week that'll go out, so by the end of the week, everything should be processed, and we should be the official owners of that property. We'll go in and start looking at it, see what we need to do. I would anticipate that we will be able to utilize it to some of the purposes that we have intended, even at the beginning of the school. So that's exciting. It'll be a great advantage to us. I'm also very appreciative of the deed family. They were really good to us in the deed. So we're appreciative of their help and support and patience as we went through the process of purchasing it. The TIMA grant, I still don't have an official letter from them. What I do have is information as recently as about an hour ago that says TIMA has approved our initial request for additional funding. Both of the bidders who qualified bid above what our grant allotment was, so we have requested additional funds. TIMA has verbally told me that that has been approved. Those funds will be coming from basically some COVID funds that they have available that they need to have on the books by September, so it works out really nicely. But their process is generally completed. They send it to FEMA, and FEMA now has it. We're hoping to get confirmation tonight. There's obviously been some natural disasters across the country. FEMA is, they're staffed at a level that they're, that we're not able to get that completed. I anticipate those will get some information back relatively soon. Now, that being said, one of the things I'd like to bring to the attention of the board is we have an objective, we have objective parameters whereby we will make a selection for who, what company to go with. It's based on lowest and best for the Fayetteville City School System, as that is within our purview to control and to kind of make sure that we're doing right with. Now, once this is gone through with TIMA and with FEMA, it comes back, we get a letter, and the match is up to a certain percentage. If we get the same matches that we have got, it's obvious, like, what is lowest and best for us? If it goes beyond, you know, 13 and 15 and 17, the margins get, they become like really narrow, and then it goes the other way. So what I would like to say is my recommendation is going to be that we go with whatever the objective math works out with as the lowest and best qualifying bid within those parameters. Philosophically, I think that's the right thing to do. It is the best use of our funds. It is the most objective way to go about it. That being said, my intention is to proceed accordingly once I get the letter. I would probably send everyone an email or a text, but this is the time, if we want to have a discussion about any of the philosophy, or if anybody has misgivings about anything in that order of operations, or if you have concerns about how the objective math works out, now's the time to have that conversation so that we don't delay the project by another three weeks or a month. Now, if you all want to, that's fine. We can do that, but it's just another delay. So I will present that as my recommendation to the board as we move forward.
We won't need board action on the selection. I guess really the thought is philosophically, as a board member of the Fayetteville City School System, do you view lowest and best means the lowest and best out of the funds of the Fayetteville City School System, which is your recommendation? Or do you view that we should define lowest and best in some other way? We are stewards of the Fayetteville City School System, not, I mean, my personal opinion is we are not stewards of the federal taxes, we're not stewards of state taxes, but we are sworn to do what we can to protect the system. So I appreciate the recommendation. And what the, like I say, there's no board action needed, but just so that if, you know, hypothetically, if the letter comes in next week, and it's, let's say it's a 10% match, the math is gonna tell pretty clearly which the lowest and best bidder is out of Fayetteville City School Funds. So based on any discussion we wanted to have, if everybody's comfortable with that, and he's just, Eric can just run.
So this is, forgive me, this is, so looking at that numbers that we were receiving last month, we kind of had that grab that we're looking through some of those. The match that we're anticipating to get back, or correspondence back from TIMA could alter those?
Yes. That match number is gonna tell, basically, make the decision for us. It becomes a math problem.
Okay.
If it's a low number, one of the companies is more advantageous for us because of the way the structure of their bid works. If it's a higher number, it goes the other way and breaks, just because of the way, what qualifies and what doesn't qualify, it's not really super complicated, it's just the way they, everybody puts their bids in. So it's best for us to go up to a certain number with one company and then to go the other way if it goes higher. And like I say, I don't know what the matches are. I'm encouraged from TIMA's verbal conversation that it will get a good match rate, but I don't wanna, you know, it's premature to say what I think will happen, and I don't want to do that out of turn. At the same time, I think it would be probably in everybody's best interest also, whenever this happens, that the next board meeting after we have it, that I'll just go through the math and show, it's like, this is where the numbers came in, these are the letters verifying that, this is how we made our decision.
And nothing changes about the grant we know about. The question is now we have, we have about three, roughly 3 million additional funds that we have requested, an additional, an add-on to the grant. We just don't know what the terms of that are gonna be.
Sure.
And so, once they define that...
Yeah.
The math falls out very quickly.
That's exactly right.
I think that is my, I think I think her with you, that our fiduciary responsibility types appears at Fayetteville, and then so on and so on.
Right, right, right. If everybody's comfortable with that, and I assume you are, but I think it's, I appreciate you bringing it to the board just for a discussion to make sure that's, everybody's comfortable with that definition of lowest and best to the Fayetteville City School System.
Yes, and everything's, you know, a lot might be completely transparent.
Right, right.
So Ron Clark's a very in-demand speaker. J.D. Hughes is well thought of as well in bringing him in. And on the 31st, very excited, a speaker that Spencer really wanted that we'd had before, which is Brian Menler. And Brian Menler is also, especially since we had him before, a very well thought of presenter and speaker. So he'll be presenting to our entire group on the 31st. So those are kind of the things. Also, on that collaborative P.E., we, because we're paying for a grant, invited some other school systems, and I got word today, I don't know if I told Mr. Jones, we've got 10 P.E. teachers from Giles County coming that are also going to be a part of our P.E. training because a lot of times you don't have things for those instructors. We also invited Lincoln County to participate, and we've invited Moore County. Because again, that's kind of a large group presentation. But those are the things that we've got on tap. And again, we're very excited about this grant because normally we wouldn't be able to afford this caliber of speaker. So would invite you, if you'd like to come in and sit in, it's going to be really good stuff.
What are, okay, are those all on the 29th?
No, the 29th is going to be Ron Clark and Ted Schott. And then J.D. Hughes is, and I'm very excited about his topic, this is why when I saw him, I knew we had to get him, academic integration in P.E. class, as well as collaboration and working as a team. So he is, he is the best at what he does. He's on the 30th, and that'll be also, all of the science people will meet together, all of the E.L.A. people, all of the math people, all of the C.T.E. people, because that's been something that we did, that the teachers requested over and over again. And then if you wanted to see Brian Menler, he will be on the morning of the 31st. And he is an excellent speaker as well.
So Ron Clark is going to be on the 29th at church?
Yes, yes. Ron begins at 8:30, so you can eat breakfast, and then we'll slide straight into Ron. So do you guys have any questions for me about this or anything else? Oh, also, Redstone, we're very excited, I want to brag on them, they approached us about doing the meal, of course, for the cookout, and they're gonna, yeah, they're gonna pay for that, they're gonna, yeah, they're, they're coming, they're cooking, they're paying for it, so they're gonna do burgers and hot dogs, and then we're gonna, we're gonna integrate some things there and pick up some baked beans and other things, which works out great for us, because then our people can be facilitating those content areas.
And what day is the cookout?
Um, the cookout is, is it the 31st?
It's on the...
Thursday?
Thursday, I think it's the...
Wednesday or Thursday?
I think it's Thursday, the 31st. I was, I pulled up my email. That's okay, I just pulled up my email before I came up here because, but we're gonna be sending this out to you guys as we're doing our whole detailed deal. Yep, 31st. But yeah, the 31st is that, and it will be at the middle school. So we definitely want you guys to come and help do that. And I think that is where we're gonna work in the banana pudding, by the way. Because that's been a goal.
It's been a goal.
Yeah, that was, that was a goal when we were putting our notes together.
What, what school is Brian Menler going to be at?
He is actually going to be talking to the whole everybody, but he's going to be at Fayetteville High School. So we're gonna be doing that one in the cafeteria. Now, here's what's awesome about it, he's not just doing an hour presentation, he's doing like a three-hour workshop. So there's gonna be a lot of up and moving around, and he's a very unique presenter, if you haven't heard him before. But yeah, we had a lot of positive feedback when we had him a few years ago, and that's why Spencer is going to be introducing him. Spencer would tell you as a teacher, he changed how Spencer interacted with his students. And Spencer was the one that brought him up and opened discussion, and it was amazing we were able to book him.
This is one of the more dynamic years for PD that we've probably ever had. We're blessed to have great grants and great people to write the grants and manage them and orchestrate all this.
But yeah, but those guys, all of those presenters are well worth the investment, and I would, I would put those individuals up against anybody that goes. But anything else you guys would like to know? Again, you'll be getting a more detailed list of all that as it's fleshed out in totality. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas.
And I just, I, it's just piggybacking on that, Ron Clark, you've gotta come, you've gotta see him. He's, one thing that he's going to address with our, with our teachers and staff is just the buy-in of students and making sure that, you know, in the classroom, there's good classroom environment where it's basically school climate. I think if you've ever gone to his, I've never been fortunate enough to go to the academy, but he started the Ron Clark Academy. It was a nonprofit organization for, it was in Atlanta, Georgia, for the low socioeconomic area. And he, apparently, right when you walk in, there's this, what, three-story slide that he put in the main four-year area. I know Bridget's gone, so, but, but it's pretty cool how he's, he's created a lot of innovative things for the school. So I'm eager to hear him. But I also wanted to mention summer camp. I know that Spencer bragged on that, and that, that was a big success. We had about 150 students. And with our title funds, we were able to offset the cost on the STEM, and we provided STEM classes for all students. So we had an engineering section for students, as well as Mr. Hobbs, Mr. Hobbs and Ashia Hicks, they were the ones that put that on. And then they also dissected frogs and owl pellets and things like that. So that was a lot of fun. So it wasn't just acad, you know, it wasn't just hardcore academics, it was a lot of fun for the kids. And then pre-K, I wanted to mention that we've really, you know, put a, put a call out to get kids involved in our pre-K program. So we've got about 60 students enrolled, we've got 20 slots left. So we usually have several trickle in around this time. So hopefully, we'll get it full, and we'll have our 80 students enrolled. So, thank you.
Do you see change, there are changes in head start?
Yes, yes.
Do you see that impacting?
Definitely. Yeah, we had a meeting the other day, and they're, they're focusing on their three-year-old program, so we'll get a lot of their students as well. So, yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Williams?
So the year-to-date revenue and experience reports for the month of June or the year-to-date through June, was a male employer, and how they're taking questions you may have? Just, these are not the final numbers, those were, final numbers probably on this, on this, we're still closing out the year.
Getting close.
Getting close.
Appreciate those monthly reports. Any questions on those? Committee reports, facilities and transportation.
Yes, sir. Black Start, put an update on the deed property. We've been getting some assistance from an attorney, and they, right now, we have, I believe we hold the, our names on the deed, we are writing a check this week, they'll go out. So by the end of the week, everything should be processed, and we should be the official owners of that property. We'll go in and start looking at it, see what we need to do. I would anticipate that we will be able to utilize it to some of the purposes that we have intended, even at the beginning of the school. So that's exciting. It'll be a great advantage to us. I'm also very appreciative of the deed family. They, they were really good to us in the deed. So we're appreciative of their help and support and patience as we went through the process of purchasing it. The TMA grant, I still don't have an official letter from them. What I do have is information, or as recently as about an hour ago, that says TMA has approved our initial request for additional funding. Both of the bidders who qualified bid above what our grant allotment was, so we have requested additional funds. TMA has verbally told me that that has been approved. Those funds will be coming from basically some COVID funds that they have available that they need to have on the books by September. So it works out really nicely. But their process is generally completed, they send it to FEMA, and FEMA now has it. We're hoping to get confirmation tonight. There's obviously been some natural disasters across the country. FEMA is, they're staffed at a level that they're, that we're not able to get that completed. I anticipate those will get some information back relatively soon. Now, that being said, one of the things I'd like to bring to the attention of the board is, we have an objective, we have objective parameters whereby we will make a selection for who, what company to go with. It's based on lowest and best for the Fayetteville City School System, as that is within our purview to, to control and to, to kind of make sure that we're doing right with it. Now, once this is gone through with TMA and with FEMA, it comes back, we'll get a letter, and the match is up to a certain percentage. If we get the same matches that we have got, it's obvious, like, what is lowest and best for us? If it goes beyond, you know, 13 and 15 and 17, the margins get, they become like really narrow, and then it goes the other way. So what I would like to say is, my recommendation is going to be that we go with whatever the objective math works out with as the lowest and best qualifying bid within those parameters. Philosophically, I think that's the, the right thing to do. It is the best use of our funds, it is the most objective way to go about it. That being said, my intention is to proceed accordingly once I get the letter. I would probably send everyone an email or a text, but this is the time, if we want to have a discussion about any of the philosophy, or if anybody has misgivings about anything in, in that order of operations, or if you have concerns about how the objective math works out, now's the time to have that conversation so that we don't delay the project by another three weeks or a month. Now, if you don't want to, that's fine, we can, we can do that, but it's just another delay. So I would present that as my recommendation to the board as we move forward.
And we won't need board action on the selection. I guess really the thought is philosophically, as a board member of the Fayetteville City School System, do you view lowest and best means the lowest and best out of the funds of the Fayetteville City School System, which is your recommendation is? Or do you view that we should define lowest and best in some other way? We are stewards of the Fayetteville City School System, not, I mean, my personal opinion is we are not stewards of federal taxes, we're not stewards of state taxes, but we are sworn to, to do what we can to fix the system. So I appreciate the recommendation. And what the, like I say, there's no board action needed, but just so that if, you know, hypothetically, if the letter comes in next week, and it's, let's say it's a 10% match, the math is going to tell pretty clearly which the lowest and best bidder is out of Fayetteville City School Funds. So, and based on any discussion we wanted to have, if everybody's comfortable with that, and he's just, Eric can just run.
So this is, forgive me, this is, so, so, looking at that numbers that we received last month, we kind of had that graph, and we're looking through some of those, the match that we're anticipating to get back, or correspondence back from TMA could alter those?
Yes, that match number is going to tell, basically, make the decision for us, it becomes a math problem. If it's a low number, one of the companies is more advantageous for us because of the way the structure of their bid works. If it's a higher number, it goes the other way and breaks, just because of the way, what qualifies, what doesn't qualify, it's not really super complicated, it's just the way they, everybody puts their bids in. So it's best for us to go up to a certain number with one company, and then to go the other way if it goes higher. And like I say, I don't know what the matches are. I'm encouraged from TMA's verbal conversation that it will get a good, a good match rate, but I don't want to, you know, it's premature to say what I think will happen, and I don't want to do that out of terror at the same time. I think it would be probably in everybody's best interest also, whenever this happens, that the next board meeting after we have it, that I'll just go through the math and show, it's like, this is where the numbers came in, this is, these are the letters verifying that, this is how we made our decision.
And nothing changes about the grant we know about. The question is, now we have, we have about three, roughly three million additional funds that we have requested, an additional, an add-on to the grant. We just don't know what the terms of that are going to be. And so, once they define that, the math falls out very quickly.
That's exactly right.
I think that is my, I think I think her with you, that our fiduciary responsibility taxpayers of Fayetteville, and then so on and so on.
If everybody's comfortable with that, and I assume you are, but I think it's, I appreciate you bringing it to the board just for a discussion, to make sure that's, everybody's comfortable with that definition of lowest and best to the Fayetteville City School System.
Yes, and everything's, you know, I want it to be completely transparent. Any other questions or concerns on the matter, or any opinions that you'd like to share? Very well, thank you.
Yeah, thanks very much.
Also, I will say, Eric took us the facilities through the Rock Biscuits, and it's so impressive. The crews are working, I mean, everything was just like popcorn, Jeff was on top of it, everything looks so nice, it's gonna be really amazing when that's completed, just as a side note, on the facility side. Good things are happening, which is cool, because we saw the drawing of that, you know, so many years ago, and it's cool, just like Bridget and I said, it's so nice to see this finally conceptualized in real life. It's just, it's exciting to see that being done now.
It's gonna be such a better facility, and it's gonna be so much more convenient and helpful, and I think of all the different events that we have. Grandparents' Day is what keeps popping in my head. We will have so much better situation for the grandparents to come in and to be able to, you know, we'll even have ADA van parking, there will be, people will be able to go straight from the parking lot with no curb, no brake whatsoever, right onto, you know, the sidewalk, and then be able to use the ramps and go in, and it's gonna be a completely different world than it has been.
Well, the year we did the meet and greet, the first day of school, and it came a torrent of monstrosity.
You'll be under a nice cover.
This is gonna be a treat for everybody, so, yes.
It seems like it's gonna look really good, so that's, that's great, we're pleased with that.
And that's on schedule, right?
It's on schedule, in spite of all the rain, where they got about three or four days behind, week before last when it rained every day, but then they made up for it, and we're right back on schedule. They said, they, that group has been phenomenal to work with, we're really pleased. They, they tell us what their intentions are, and then they go do what they said they were gonna do, and you just can't ask for more than that, so.
And the schedule is for it to be usable day one?
Yeah, the canopy, the, the plan is the canopy, and the sidewalks and all of that part will be ready and usable, substantially complete, ready to use on day one. By the end of fall break, we should have everything, landscaping, the, the canopies of the sidewalk going out toward the annex, all that should be good to go.
That's awesome. Yeah, that's gonna be great.
And that's my report for facilities and transportation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, any further questions or discussion? All right. In finance committee, we have one amendment that we need to make to the FY25 general purpose budget. It is a line item amendment, and you'll, if you, it was emailed out, but if you, if you've looked at those dollar totals, you can see it is really, really fine tuning some of the end-of-year adjustments to some lines, down to the $25.34 sort of mark. So not big money, but, but again, we're audited every year, and these are, these are things we just have to make, or Miss Williams ensures are perfect when the audits are done. And so I would make a motion that we approve line item amendment number four to the FY25 general purpose budget. All right, thank you, I've got a second. Any discussion or questions about that? All in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed, say no? Great, thank you very much. And this, this, since it's just line item, it will not have to go to the city, so no action required by the mayor or all of them. Insurance and policy? Nothing, okay. Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir. It's July, but everything's rolling right along, as you can hear from the supervisor and principal's reports were wide open. One of the things that I want us to complete before the end of the summer is, I want the leadership team comprised of these, the staff up here, as well as the principals, to come together on the 17th. We'll do kind of a leadership conference, and we'll start here, then we'll go, basically just a time for us to discuss, do a little strategic planning, incorporate how we're going to make sure that we're in, in compliance with some of the new laws that have changed. Any kind of legislative session that's really active, there's a lot to go over, so we're gonna spend the morning doing that, and then we're gonna take a little retreat, as long as no one has an issue with it, and go get a bite to eat, and have some leisure time in that afternoon, and go to Topgolf or something like that, for a couple hours, and do some team building that afternoon. So we're, this is quality regimen, and everybody's done a great job with our finances and our grants, and we're gonna utilize as much as we can with professional development while we're able to spend grant money and things like that. So I'm excited about those possibilities, and I think there's a lot of really good, a lot of really good buzz and a lot of really good excitement heading into the school year. So, please, that's my report.
Okay, could I pop quiz, a quick question? A lot of news about title funds, whatnot, as we go forward, next school year?
Yes, sir, on July 1st.
Some purposes of how that'll be affected?
We don't know completely, but I'll bring the board up to speed on the situation. There's been some changes in federal funding for public education. Of course, we just finished our budgetary cycle, and we gotta put a nice budget together, and went to the city, and they worked hard on their budget, and on July 1st, which is the very first day of our fiscal year, I got an email saying that there's probably gonna be some changes to some of the smaller titles like three and four, as well as some of the others. Some of those don't impact us at all, and some don't impact us significantly, but in total, we're already looking at, you know, 50,000-plus of budgeted funds that may not come to us. We are gonna get some, one of the big things that might be affected could be our after-school program. Now, what that means is, we have no intention of making any changes in response to this information, we will just have to basically, you know, buckle down and pay for it out of general, and make plans accordingly for next year. That's what's unfortunate about the situation. If they, we got this in January, we could have easily planned for it, but because we didn't get it until after the start of the fiscal year, we're having to react rather than plan, which is not, you know, it's less than ideal, but, you know, every cloud has a silver lining, they may restructure, and it may be to our benefit in the long run. However it goes, we'll put a plan together, make sure we're taking care of our customers, and we're, we're in a good position to be able to do that.
I did have one last question about the start of the school year. We've had this tradition of meeting and greeting students and parents and whatnot on one of the first days. Is there a preference for which day works best this year? For the board to sort of show up and do some meet and greet, we've always, you know...
The first day or the first full day are the ones that will be phenomenal, as far as we're concerned.
So either the fifth or sixth?
When is the first full day?
No, the fifth is the first.
The fifth is the first.
The fifth is Wednesday.
That's a Tuesday.
The fifth is the half, right.
Yeah, the fifth is our half day.
So maybe the sixth is the first full day.
Especially Wednesday or Wednesday.
Okay, is that frugal? Okay, we'll, we'll plan on that, and maybe, maybe all the, inquire with the full board so we make sure.
Yeah, sure.
The sixth. We usually do show up around seven or so, we just set, hey, it's kind of, what's fun? See families. We pick, what we usually do is divide and conquer with three buildings and six members, we kind of just pick whichever one you have in gun in a year or two. So if you have a little, maybe we'll start that conversation, we can all sign up.
Sure, yeah, we can, we can do that. And it, it's really needed to get to the different buildings to see the responses, like, some of the little ones are crying, some of them are like jumping and skipping, and all the older ones are just kind of excited to be with their friends and show off their clothes, and, yeah, it's, it's a really neat tradition.
And parents are doing wheelies out of the parking lot.
Yeah, that's great.
It's a fun.
Cool backpacks, whole backpack fashion.
Yeah, backpack fashion, that's right.
And it's really just the whole meet and greet aspect, I think it, it really strengthens the family feel, you know, one of the beautiful things about a small school system is you really can know when families pull up to drop off their child, and they see people they know, it's just, it's a real blessing, so. And then board members, our next regularly scheduled board meeting would be Monday, the 4th of August, we've thrown out a lot of dates and times, but Monday, the 4th, if that's not gonna be a giant conflict for any board members. Well, not, okay, as long as we get a board, we're, hearing nothing else, we'll, we'll proceed, assuming that, but then we'll, we'll trust the other board members will speak up if they have time, but we can always change that date if necessary. We have no further business? Mr. Bradford, anything from the city?
Just a couple of things, just very quickly to go along with our new Ascent Building. Hopefully, we will have Third Avenue repaid before the fall.
That's right.
We're working on that, we have worked with F.P.U., trying to work with them to have a good pavement plan for the city, if we have identified different streets. And of course, Third is on top of the list, but hopefully, F.P.U. will complete the work on the square, and then they will go with Third Avenue, so we didn't want to pave Third Avenue and then come in and get it right back up, so hopefully, we'll be, hopefully, we're shooting very hard for it to get it done before the first day of school. And that's one of the things that we hear a lot about. On the city side of things, I know everybody's read and heard about our mess-up, screw-up, I mean, that's just what it was, with the tax rate. So our budget was presented with that particular amount of 1.40, since we had a meeting last week and went back, because we all made sure during the budget process that we wanted it understood if we didn't want to have the right taxes. So that being said, we went back, the tax rate will stay the same, we're in a little bit of a hole, but we'll dig ourselves out.
But it is just a planning document, right?
It is. But I'm excited about the Third Avenue thing, because I've got grandson, and I'm both there a lot, and the school does look good, I've been over there several times, checking it out.
Well, please, we appreciate the city's, you know, consideration of that, trying to take our time and bring them into account as best as possible, we're grateful.
Yeah, I know those residents will be excited.
They won't, they may not be excited about the, the work being done, having to be done at night, but, you know, we, we have a city ordinance, but the ordinance hasn't provisioned it for infrastructure and for public safety, it'd be better to be done around.
And it'll be over sooner rather than later. That's awesome, well, thank you. Any final comments you want? Otherwise, we will stand adjourned. Thank you.